Good evening. Welcome to the February 10th edition of the Lansing City Council meeting. Could the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Betts. Councilmember Dunbar. Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein. Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Spethafor.
Present.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Councilmember Spitzley is here.
She is here. Councilmember Wood. There are eight members present in the quorum.
Thank you. As we rise for meditation and pledge, are there any individuals you'd like us to keep in mind this evening during our moment of meditation?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic that will withstand one nation under one law, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You have for your approval the printed council proceedings of January 27th?
Mr. Vice President.
I move the council proceedings from January 27th, 2020 as presented.
It's been moved by Council Vice President Hussein. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carries.
And we are to comments by councilmembers and the city clerk.
Any councilmembers wish to make comments this evening? Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. Fourth Saturday of the month is our constituent contact meeting, and that is February 29th this month. I'd like to thank the people that came out, and I'm also looking to find ways collectively how we can kind of open up local government more, get more interaction going on, seeing new people come. Because I make these announcements here and say, "Come to constituent contact meeting," and you know, it's a little turnout, not like Mr. Hussein's, but you've got a better connection, a better network. So I'm just looking for ways so that we can be more transparent and have more open dialogues. If you have any suggestions, let me know. Thank you.
Any other councilmember comments? Councilmember.
Just really quickly, I want to thank everybody that did come out to our constituent contact meeting this past Saturday, and in particular, I'd like to thank the mayor. You know, I had asked him to come out maybe for a half an hour, and he stayed just about the entire time. I thought there were a lot of really good questions, concerns that folks had, and he really did stay and address each and every one of them, so I certainly appreciate that. Also appreciate the myriad of local representatives that we had out. It was really powerful to see citizens and neighborhood leaders and area representatives all coming together to address issues, prioritize issues, so incredibly appreciative. The second, I guess, announcement I have is that the Southwest Action Group will be meeting this Thursday at 6:00 PM. That's at 2101 West Holmes at the Southside Community Coalition. We meet monthly. We really are pretty much open to anybody in terms of attendance. We are going to discuss at this month's meeting 2020 Southwest Action Group kind of projects and things that we're looking to do throughout the South Lansing community. And we're also going to have the development team in that's taking a look at the old school site, the Pleasant Grove &amp; Holmes intersection, to discuss just a little bit about what they see as potential for that particular site. So again, we invite anybody and everybody out to that meeting. Again, that's 6:00 PM Thursday at 2101 West Holmes. Thanks.
Anyone else? Mr. Clerk.
Thank you, President Spethafor. It will be my usual reiteration that there is an election coming. In fact, one month exactly from today, March 10th, is the presidential primary here in Michigan. In the city of Lansing, we do have as well five local proposals on the ballot for most of the city. Our Eaton County precincts only have two proposals, but lots to vote on. Under Michigan law for a presidential primary, we do have separate ballots for the Democratic candidates in the proposals, the Republican candidates with the proposals, and then a ballot with only the proposals. And it is required that voters select which ballot they want, whether they're voting in person on Election Day or absentee voting from home. We do need that selection. There's plenty of time still to get an absentee ballot. We will be issuing them through the mail up until the Friday before the election, in person in both of our offices up through 4:00 PM the day before the election. We do have some special hours. Each Saturday before the election will be open from 10 to 2 at our South Washington location. Also, each Wednesday before the election will be open until 7 o'clock at our South Washington location. And the Friday and Saturday before the election, we will be open from 10:00 AM until 10:00 PM, both Saturday and Sunday at our South Washington location, and that's 2500 South Washington. I do want to caution folks, though, voting by absentee ballot is very convenient, but in this, in a presidential primary, sometimes candidates drop out and they're still on the ballot, so if you're not sure and you think your candidate maybe is on the bubble of dropping out before the election, you might want to hang on to it and turn it in closer to Election Day. With that, we are to community event announcements. Anyone in the audience, we'll give you one minute to tell us details of any events. And seeing none then, let me announce that we're to public comment on legislative matters, and that includes the items listed under the consent agenda, resolutions for action, and the ordinance for introduction. We'll be picking that up in just a few moments, and before that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. President. Well, first, I want to echo what Councilman Hussein said. It was really, a really good discussion with a lot of people there, so I appreciate everyone who showed up, appreciate the invitation. And for the other three members sitting across from me, I would love to come to yours as well. I'd love to do one or two of these per ward a year, if that works for you all, so please, let's get together, because it's good to be in each ward talking to the citizens. But I think possibly the funniest part of the evening was when both Councilman Hussein and I were trying to convince Kathy Toby to come here and actually accept being on the fire commission. She's a wonderful person, but apparently has stage fright. So, second, I want to thank everybody who came to the state of the city. It was just a great event. My staff did a fantastic job setting up that room. The place looked great, and you know, it was very positive. We talked about great things going on and challenges, but I had a lot of folks who were happy to see a community that I believe is united together and moving things forward, especially after the night before when there was a lot of fireworks at the State of the Union. So, thank you to everybody who was there, who watched online, and who helped to set it up. It was great. In terms of things coming up, we've got our Baker Neighborhood Press Conference at 1:00 PM on Thursday at Bethlehem Lutheran Church, so folks who want to come and see what's going on in the Baker Neighborhood can come to that. On Friday, the 21st, our Arts Impact Grant Press Conference will happen. Again, if you're at the state of the city, you heard about the new project that's being announced. It's going to be these tiles on the steps of the Shihawassee Bridge and on the walls, so press conference is at the Shihawassee Bridge staircase on the 21st. On the February 25th, there'll be our Neighborhood Summit and Budget Night at Sexton, and then, I know I talked, oh, at 6:00 PM. And I talked about this last time, but April 1st, don't forget, Census Day. So be ready for the census, and April 1st, we'll do a census breakfast at Guyer Community Center as we kick off the census. So lots of great things coming up. Thanks. Councilmember Wood, and then I've got a question.
Mr. Mayor, isn't the Mobile Food Bank this Saturday at Penway Church, God and Christ?
Yes, it is. I believe that's true. Thank you very much. I completely forgot to add that to my list of things. But yes, that is this Saturday, 9 to usually when supplies run out. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have a question. I'm sorry, didn't get a hold of you beforehand. Could you address the issue related to the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, Michigan Strategic Fund, and the Red Cedar Development Project? Sure. Well, as you know, we, the council and the mayor, we approved the incentive package for that project here. I thought it was a good plan, and after we do that, it goes to MEDC for their review. They've got brownfield dollars as well. They can do, in essence, a school dollar capture, and again, but for that project, there would be no school dollar capture, so they can allow that to be part of the plan. The plan was put in. There were some issues raised by MEDC, as they do with a lot of different proposals that get put in. The developers, in essence, the plan was withdrawn. Fixes will be made, and I believe tomorrow it will be resubmitted with the changes that the MEDC asked for, and then we'll move forward towards the next meeting, the March meeting, I think it is. There's no guarantee it's going to be, you know, approved, as there never is, but the staff raised a variety of objections to the plan, and it was withdrawn, will be changed, and will be resubmitted. So it's fairly common, I'd say it happened closer to the end than we would have expected, but there were a variety of factors that led to that, people on vacation, things like that, review of the plan. So we're, you know, it's been withdrawn and will be resubmitted, I think, tomorrow by 5:00. Do you anticipate any of the changes that are proposing to impact the decisions made at this table? No. Okay. I mean, if the MEDC rejects it, I mean, that's their decision, clearly. I don't think they should, but if they did, it's their decision, but no, I don't, I mean, we've done, we have in essence enabled the capture for the amounts that we see in that project. There's not really much more for us to do, so no, I don't anticipate coming back here with anything further. Okay. Oh, Councilmember Wood, sorry.
Based on that information, if, and I only say if, the plan were rejected, to the city attorney, does a development agreement, is there any issues with the development agreement that is contingent on the approval of the plans in order to have the development agreement considered in full? Or if they reject that, is the development agreement null and void, and could the money have to be returned?
Well, a number of questions there, but there's no right of reverter or any provision in the agreement. That the property would go back to the city. The developers have put personal guarantees on it, on the agreement, and there are performance obligations. The fact that there's no state-approved brownfield is a financing issue for them, and I suspect their financing, their bridge loan banks will be putting more pressure on them than we would.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, and as I indicated, legislative matters includes the items on the consent agenda, resolutions for action, and ordinances for introduction. We have, Evelyn Conklin has put down an item that is not a legislative matter, so I will call on you on the second period if that's what you want to talk about. And then we have Loretta Stanaway. Loretta? Pass? Okay. Then we are to the consent agenda.
Mr. Vice President.
Mr. President, we are pulling 1A, so with that being said, there is no consent agenda.
Resolutions for action by the Committee on General Services.
Councilmember Spitzley. No?
No.
I'm sorry, I skipped ahead. Councilmember Hussein.
This is a community funding request. The initial request was $500. This was to defray costs for facilities rental associated with an event. Let's talk about it. The applicant in this case is GLAC. It came forward to us, there is an event, March 12th, 5:30 to 7:30 PM, and this is at Dwight Rich, located at 2600 Hampton. And there is, it's going to be a conversation about safe encounters with law enforcement. There is an incredibly diverse panel that has been established. I think it includes Judge Allen, Chief Green, Sheriff Riggleworth, and there's a few others. The facilitator, if I am remembering correctly, will be A.N. O'Neil. And when they came before us, this particular group for this $500 request, we noticed that there were a number of funding sources. They had a deficit at that time of about $675, so there was a motion on the floor to actually make, essentially make them whole, and actually move forward with a $675 grant to this particular group. So with that being said, I would move the resolution for $675 for GLAC.
It's been moved by Vice President Hussein. Councilmember Wood.
At this time, it was raised in General Services Committee, that I am an associate member of the organization, and it was recommended by the city attorney that represented the city attorney's office, that I recuse myself, so I'm asking that I be recused.
Hey, we need a motion to recuse Councilmember Wood.
So moved.
Moved by Vice President Hussein. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries with one abstention. Councilmember Wood abstained from that vote. So yes, now the motion before us is the approval of the community funding grant. Councilmember Hussein.
I don't know if this will affect anyone's vote, but there was a question. This is open to the public. They are hoping for an attendance, you know, somewhere around 150. It is free to the public as well.
All those in favor, please say aye. All opposed, say nay.
Okay, we are to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Out, it's Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. The first item we have before us is SLU 3-2019, setting a public hearing for 1315 Massachusetts Avenue for rezoning here. It's currently a single-family home, but the owners of the property would like to turn it into additional parking for the adjacent CACS Head Start program that is across the street from it. The owners of the property have said that they will provide a buffer to the neighboring property owner of about six feet, and then convert the remainder of the lot into parking lot. And so with that, I'll move the resolution that sets the public hearing for March 13th. I'm sorry, March 16th, 2020.
The motion has been made by Councilmember Spitzley. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Jackson.
Sorry, President Spethafor. So just hearing this, I mean, it does not really sound appealing to turn much of anything into a parking lot, so I imagine there may be one to zero people to speak about a public hearing, so hopefully if anybody's out there and they have something to say, come on out, because I would like not to vote for something like that, but you know, if there's no other good reasons, thanks to the side, so come on out.
If I may, Mr. President. I think, I think that this has been in that neighborhood, this Head Start program, for a very, very long time, and so I think that, while I understand your concern and respect your concern about, you know, developing more parking lots, this is, this is going to be a positive to that, to that Head Start program, and it allows, you know, parking for the staff that's there as well, so.
Councilmember Hussein.
It should be noted, too, that historically, there has been a huge problem in this area with on-street parking. And so the hope is that this mitigates some of that. I think the other piece is that when this was a, in elementary school, you had, you know, one teacher to 25 to 26 to 27 students, they are mandated to have, I believe it's three, three professionals per classroom, so they've actually increased the number of professionals that are providing services to that particular, so we've only, we've only exacerbated this on-street parking issue.
Councilmember Betts.
Thank you, Mr. President. Councilman Jackson, I just wanted to say that the person to the north has a problem with putting a parking lot there. However, we are going to be, or the development will include a row of trees and a privacy fence, so it will not decrease the value of the property to the north.
All that being said, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries.
And remember, that is just for the setting of the public hearing for March 16th, 2020.
Okay, we are to ordinances for introduction. The following ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, providing that the code of ordinances be amended by providing for the rezoning of a property located in the city of Lansing, Michigan, and for the revision of the district maps adopted by Section 1246.02 of the code for property located at Z92019, 3440 Northeast Street rezoning from F Commercial District to G2 Wholesale District with a condition restricting the allowable uses, was introduced by the Committee on Development and Planning. We're at a first time by its title and refer to the Committee on Development and Planning.
Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. What this is, is this is a, this is a house on 3440 Northeast Street that is being converted into a testing facility. It will be, the only use allowed will be for a marijuana testing and safety compliance facility. They have told us that the only marijuana that will be on-site will be a small amount that's going to be used for testing, processing, for testing, I'm sorry. There will be no processing or growing or selling. It is strictly for testing and compliance. He has, the applicant has went out into the neighborhood, done their due diligence, and has come back to us and said that the neighborhood is in compliance, is in support of this, and this would be, again, a public hearing that would be scheduled for March 16th, 2020. There was some discussion in, and some concern amongst some of our councilmembers that this was, concerned that this was a spot zoning. It was approved by the planning board, and Ms. Statrick was there. So with that, I will move the resolution setting the public hearing for March 16th, 2020.
Motion before us. Any further discussion? Councilmember Wood.
Councilmember Spitzley, could you tell us what the conditional portion of the rezoning is?
I think the, if I'm, if I'm for sure, the conditional zoning is, is the request, I'm sorry, for G2 Wholesale District from F Commercial District to G2 Wholesale. I apologize for that.
Mr. Clerk.
Now, my question is, it says here, conditional, rezoning, which means that you're putting a condition on that rezoning, and if they don't apply with it, it reverts back.
So the condition that the only use allowed will be the marijuana testing safety compliance facility.
So if the property was sold and they wanted to put an auto repair store in there, it's reverting back? Is that what you're saying to me?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Councilmember Hussein.
Rezones, whether they be conditional or not, run with the land, not the applicant. Does that answer your question? So it would say, it would stay G2 wholesale, but they, whoever took over the property could still only do marijuana compliance.
That's, yeah.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Okay, we are to registration for public comment on city government-related matters. That's the yellow sheet in the back, and we'll be picking that up in just a couple of seconds. In the meantime, we are to reports of city officers, boards, and commissions.
Oh, I'm sorry. Vice President Hussein.
So sorry. Let me pull up my language. It's only my third time reading. I move that all items be considered as being read in full and that the proper referrals be made by the president.
Thank you. The motion's been made. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, please say nay. Motion carries. Mr. Clerk.
We have a letter from the clerk regarding municipal boards, commissions, and authorities.
Placed on file.
Letters from the mayor regarding payment in lieu of taxes for their senior apartments at 505 Townsend Street.
The Committee on Development and Planning.
Brownfield Plan Number 79, 700 North Washington, Michigan Retailers Redevelopment Project.
The Committee on Development and Planning.
SLU 1 of 2020, Special Land Use Permit, North Homer Street Telecommunications Tower for Metro Fiber Net LLC.
The Committee on Development and Planning.
Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act Certificate, 1611 East Calum Zoo Street, Allen Neighborhood Center Holdings.
The Committee on Development and Planning.
And a fiscal year 2020 mid-year budget amendment.
The Committee of the Whole and the Internal Auditor.
Communications and petitions, notes from the Liquor Control Commission regarding transfer of stock at Acapulco Mexican Grill at 300 North Clifford.
The Committee on General Services.
Affidavit of Disclosure, Hayden Erickson of the Lansing Police Department.
The Ethics Board.
Claim Appeal for Frank Joju.
Committee on General Services.
Claim Appeal for Jesus de la Torre Vavra.
The Committee on General Services.
And a claim appeal for Sue Lover.
Committee on General Services.
We are to remarks by councilmembers.
Any councilmembers wishing to make final remarks this evening? Councilmember Spitzley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to just kind of give a brief report. We had our first ad hoc committee on housing and safety last Friday. We are, our next, so we will be meeting every other week. Our next meeting is February 21st, at which time we'll have Mr. Brian McGrane there to give us an overview of the code enforcement and code compliance. After that, we will be inviting, on March 6th, I think, we will be inviting some large property owners there to give us their perspective, and then the week after that, we hope to invite tenants to also give us their perspective. Remember, the meetings are all open to the public. They're on every other Friday. The next one's Friday, February 21st, at 3:30 PM.
Thank you, Councilmember Spitzley. Any other comments? All right.
Comments by the mayor.
I just want to apologize to Kathy Toby. I didn't mean any offense. Hi, Kathy, out there. You're doing a wonderful job. Someone's in trouble.
Okay, we are to public comment on city government-related matters. First speaker is Evelyn Conklin, and then Daniel K. Arnold.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to talk about the parking ordinance that is going into effect on March 1st, and how unnecessary the $125 permit is. I get we need our snowplows to be able to get down our side streets, but implementing this ordinance is going to cause a major problem for many families, including mine. I also understand that the city is trying to cut back on unnecessary stragglers parking where they shouldn't be parking, but there's many other options available than this, as we have a 27% poverty rate in the city, which means that one out of every three residents are struggling to pay their bills, feed their families, let alone themselves. Brandon Betts, you said that the system will still be inequitable and unfairly impact low-income residents and working people. You are correct. This is going to make or break us. This will be the difference between many people ever maybe being able to climb out of the lower class to live a better life, and nobody wants to spend their life scraping pennies together to pay their rent, to be able to put gas in their car to get to work. Nobody wants to do that. The Fire Chief, Michael Mackey, said, and I quote, "We have no problems navigating rigs or ambulances down crowded residential streets," which means that is absolutely not a reason to justify this parking permit. Now, for the snowplows, yes, there is an issue. There's definitely an issue, but we can solve that with something else, like an odd or even parking, parking rule, whatever you would like to call it. You park on one side of the street, on an even day, you park on the other, on the odd day. That would solve some problems for the snowplows. Councilwoman Carol Wood said that either we do nothing with no assurance of any enforcement or do something that will help, but this will not help. This is going to hurt, and a lot of people don't even know about this yet, so once they do and they start getting tickets, then this is going to be a lot bigger problem for you guys. Personally, for myself, I live with eight people, and only four of our cars can fit in our driveway, so we have no other choice than to park on the street, and I know I do not have that type of money to pay for a parking permit that is unnecessary when there is many other options available that we could be doing. I just, this is not only going to personally affect me, but a lot of people I know, and it's, and it's going to hurt us as a city, and it's just unnecessary, and we can do better than this, and, and I know, and I know you guys can figure out a way, but thank you for listening to me, and have a wonderful night.
Thank you. Next, we have Daniel Arnold, and then Stephen Kocca.
Hello, everybody. Daniel Arnold, Valentine's Day is on its way, and I love my city. The setting set for new opportunities and great City of Lansing people to talk to. This will be my third week of Lansing City, Lansing Citizens Police Academy, and I've just been learning so many wonderful things there. I really appreciate them. We have wonderful first responders in our city who have a heart to save lives. Touring Inham County Dispatch was wonderful. Can you imagine that 12 dispatchers and one supervisor hold down the fort for first response? hold down the fort for first response across the entire county? Right now, they are waiting on us. In the middle of us celebrating Valentine's Day, they are there on the phone, waiting on us should we have an emergency or non-emergency concern. I celebrate my community. Once I walked around the township in just different outfits and the, the police have always been super respectful for me everywhere, local, LCC, state, it just, there's a wonderful people there. I love to explore local government and put my, putting my observations. The most pressing issue, though, on my mind is still the KKK 90 carved into the sidewalk by the outreach. Our society is past looking the other way and ignoring bigotry. It is our nature to speak up. I've talked with the mayor's office, contacted city council members, and notified police commissioners about this blight. But life goes on, and I thank the councilmember Brandon Betts for caring about this kind of detail by responding to my concerns repeatedly. What do we do? We spring to life as a community. We listen and we act. I love Lansing, and there's room for growth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Stephen Kokolka, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Schor and City Council. Just a couple of quick things I wanted to mention. One was back in Martin Luther, Martin Luther King Day, a city council member didn't stand during the National Anthem. And to me and a lot of my friends, we found that very offensive to read about it in the city polls that that's what took place, because I didn't attend the Martin Luther King Day. But I think that, that by doing this, it just separates the city even more than what it, than what it brings it together. And I think that it needs to be reconsidered when you do decide to sit during the National Anthem that how it represents how the City of Lansing is looked upon. And, but I did see you stand tonight for the Pledge of Allegiance, so I'm a little confused. I don't know what, 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 what you stand. I don't know what you do. But anyway, I was glad that you did that. I don't want to sit and talk about that whole issue. The other issue I have is, is I've come up with an idea about the streets in the, in the City of Lansing. And I think this is what it boils down to, because I own my own tree-cutting business. And we have, we, there's tree cutters that, that'll come to your house to cut a tree down that are uninsured, unprofessional, and don't know how to climb a tree. They do a lot of bucket work or whatever it might be, and they, they got, their equipment isn't as good. So, so chances are, they could hit your house, your garage, your shed, damage property or whatever. But, but like with me, a professional that's been doing the business for over 15 years, when I come to your house, I evaluate the, the job that needs to be done, and I do it to a professional standard. And I think what's happening with our streets and our roads in Inham County or in Lansing in particular is the standard isn't there. There, there has to be a standard that they uphold. And, and I did, I did this last week have the City of Lansing come through and patch some, some potholes on the grand. And they came through, and I, and I actually was out doing some work on my truck, and I, and I seen them coming through, and I went out there, I said, hey, who loves Lansing? Out of these workers, you know? And there, there's three or four of them. There's two trucks. There's one with the, with asphalt on it, and then there was another truck falling. And none of them said they loved Lansing. So, our morale and our city workers needs to be brought up, too, I believe. You know what I mean? Like, maybe you got, maybe the city council members, maybe the mayor could go down there one day and bring a box of donuts, and I don't know. Some coffee, donuts, say, hey, you guys, you're doing a good job, you know? Because all they did to, to do this cold patch was take the truck that was behind the truck that had the asphalt and just roll over it twice. And then, they just kept on moving. So, what I did is I went out front and with, with just my, my, my logger boots, I stomped on it, and them patches are still there today and it's been two snowstorms. So, they didn't come up, and they didn't go down the road, so. Come on, let's step it up, Lansing. I love this city, and I know you all do, too, so. Keep doing you, and I'll keep doing me.
Thank you. Next, we have Loretta Stanaway.
Well, hello. I came into Committee of the Whole late, and I overheard just parts of the presentation from the financial people. And I have to say, it was quite disheartening. It was discouraging. It was, it was tough to listen to.